All right. Good evening and welcome to the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District's Board Meeting. It is December 20, 2021. If you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have one addition to the agenda, and I guess we will add it under new business, and that is the letter of resignation. And then I'd like to remove under policies F6 transportation, and that will come back in January to us. So with those changes...
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike Second. Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Is there any general public with us on a call that would like to speak? We have no public here with us. Seeing none, we will move on to old business. Is there any old business? New business. Everyone received, and I'm sorry Seth, Seth had actually spoke with Chris and I earlier about this, about his resignation, and it was my oversight to add it to the agenda. I was so focused on the budget. Louis gets in my brain, and I can't think of anything else than budget numbers. But unfortunately, as you all received, the resignation letter from Seth, Seth is stepping down from the board. When I spoke to Seth, when he first contacted me, I let him know what a loss this will be to the board. I certainly value Seth's insight and his voice to this board. So I hope that, you know, at some point later on down the road, we'll see Seth come back and have a seat at the table. Was there anything you wanted to say, Seth?
Nothing too specific. I just wanted to really make sure and thank everybody who has had anything to do with the entire time while I've been on the board, whether that's board members, fellow board members, whether that's anybody in the GRCSU community. So that's literally from all people that work in buildings who have anything to do with, have always been extremely professional and extremely kind and caring with every interaction. And it shows with the students as well. It's been much fewer and further between recent years to have students come join us at some of the board meetings or some of the events, but it was a really nice feature every time I got to, and it really appreciated. That they were able to contribute virtually as well. Really, it's been, it's been a very, very, very positive experience for me. Unfortunately, I've had lots and lots of changes, both professionally and personally, since the time I joined the board, and really just have to shift some focuses now elsewhere just to make sure I don't burn myself too thin, as I have a tendency to sometimes do. So really, I'm going to be remaining with you all through the February meeting, so you know, get the budget passed and all that sort of stuff. So basically, we'll be new for the reorganization in March, and hopefully we'll have a new board member for the board as well.
Right.
But really, a thank you to everybody that I haven't had a chance to work with. I really, really appreciate it, and we all made a very enjoyable experience. So, thank you.
So Seth just wanted to put this out here so that it allowed someone the opportunity from Polkney to submit a petition to run. And I don't know, do you have a year or two years left on your seat, or were you up for three in March, Seth? Do you know?
There will be two.
Okay.
So, yeah, March of '21 started a three-year position.
Okay.
So, one year will be completed.
So this gives someone the opportunity to think about and put that petition in. So Seth's resignation will be effective, we're going to say February 28, 2022. Okay? All right. We don't need a motion for his, no, all right, I didn't think so. All right, thank you. Any other new business to come before the board? A motion would be in order for the approval of the minutes.
Correction.
A correction? Sure. What page is that? Page 15? Okay, last page.
The coaches, I think you voted no on that. We only have one. I think Jessica voted no also on that.
So there should, on page 15, it should actually say two no votes for the WRAS varsity boys coach, so we will make that correction. All right, any other changes?
Lisa, I have just a correction. I'm sorry, I was trying to find the page number, but my PDFs aren't coming up very well. The conversation that we had about budget conversation area, I'm not remembering the page, and I'm sorry, my PDF won't come up here.
Try eight.
Where we were talking about foundations, the different book programs.
Yep.
I think she typed in foundations. I believe it's actually fun-dations, F-U-N.
Okay.
I'm trying to find the page number here, sorry.
Page 10.
Page 10.
There's one instance, couple instances there.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Yeah.
Okay. So foundations should be changed to fundations.
I think it's fundations.
Yeah.
Right for student seat. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other corrections? Hearing none, a motion will be in order with those two corrections.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike Second.
I'll second.
Second by Kristen Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of warrants. You receive warrants via your email. Any questions or concerns should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order for the approval of the warrants.
So moved.
Kristen Ross, second. Second by Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are doing superintendent's report and principal's report by review only. You receive those in your email, and if you're here via hard copy. Was there anything you wanted to update us on, Chris?
Not this time, though.
Okay, thank you. Personnel, contracts. Let me just fill over that. So we have in our pocket professional staff, support staff, extracurricular. Everyone has that in their pocket. Are there any questions about the contract recommendations? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as presented on December 20, 2021.
Kristen Ross, I'll move to approve the contracts.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
One.
Motion passes by majority. You have one retirement in your pocket. A motion would be in order to accept the retirement.
Kristen Whitman, I can make a motion to accept the retirement.
Second by Mike. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Vacancies in your pocket are for information only and across the SU along with the other retirement and resignation handout. Policies. These are second read policies. B4, which is the board commitment to non-discrimination. C2, public participation at board meetings. And F11, limited English proficiency students. Questions on any of the policies as a second read. A motion would be in order to approve the three policies as presented.
Kristen Ross, I'll move to accept the policies as presented.
Second.
Sarah, I can second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Louis, finance.
Good evening, everyone. So the topic for tonight is budget. So we're looking at the second draft today. It was included in the packet. So to start, I'm just going to go over just a summary of what was included in the first draft for those of you who may not have been in attendance or may have forgot, and then we'll go into the changes for the second draft. So the first page of the budget is labeled summary of changes. It does have all of the highlights of the budget, the things that, it's the major things that were added or removed from each of the schools as well as district-wide. So that would be the place I would direct you to for most of your information. And then there's, of course, the detailed pages, which, it's 15, almost 15 pages, I think, of each of the individual budget lines for your review. So with the first draft, we were looking at total expense up by $762,000, which was 4.14%. Education spending, which is the amount we have to raise in property taxes, we are up by $295,000, which was 1.73%. And the difference between those two numbers, total education spending, is due to an increase in revenue, mostly due to both surplus revenue as well as tuition revenue. In the first draft, we saw a number of changes, as I said, on the first page. There was some, several new positions that were suggested by the administrators of the schools, which I know we're going to discuss more in detail after we go through the summary here. But not including those positions, we have just a normal increase in health insurance. Health insurance is up by 5.2%. We have increases in wages that are included. We have the special disallow that was up, which we increased our estimates at the SU level so that we weren't behind at the end of the year when we closed the year. SU assessments are now based on the final draft, I mean, the final approved budget. And those are the major items. We had an increase in tuition revenue, which was $249,000, and then we have, we had the $1.3 million surplus that we talked about last month. Right now, I have estimates that I've put aside based on last year's ballots. So last year, the taxpayers approved to put up to 50% into a capital maintenance fund and up to 20% into athletic fund. So the board will have to decide exactly how much they want to put into those funds. But right now, I have set aside $650,000 for capital maintenance and $250,000 for athletics.
I thought we decided.
So those are the numbers that are already in this budget, so if we do anything different, that'll have an impact on the budget. So looking at the second draft, there is two main changes to the budget. The first change is I have updated our vocational tuition numbers. These are unfortunately still estimates at this time. We have not received the official six semester rolling average from the state. That is, was due out by now, but we have not received it. And so right now, we're looking at a $71,000 increase, and that's mainly due to an increase in students, but that is a nonofficial number at this point. The other piece, which I'm not sure finals yet, I was told that staff tuition was not approved, but the number, I have in here the number that went to that board for a vote. And then the second piece that's included in this second draft of the budget is staff horizontal movements. So December 15 was the deadline for staff to submit a letter to the superintendent notifying us of horizontal movements, and we did receive quite a few. So those are all included in here, which are resulting in budget increases. And for those of you that are not aware, so horizontal movements are when a teacher is moving from one column on salary schedule to another based on additional credits that they have taken or a completion of a degree. So if they have a bachelor's and they just completed their master's, then they can go to a different column. Or if they have 10 credits and now they have 20 credits, they can move over columns, which results in an increase in salary. So based on the second draft, total expenses now looking at $876,000 increase, 4.76%, and education spending is up by $408,000, which is 2.4%. So I'm going to just read off some of the school additions, which we'll discuss a little, some of them will be discussed in executive session because it is personnel discussions, and then some will be open session discussions. And then we can talk a little bit too about the tax rate calculation. So at Polkney Elementary School, there was a recommendation for, and this would be a shared position between elementary and high school, there was a recommendation for a new custodian. There was a custodian that was cut out of the budget last year, and they're looking to add that position back in due to reasons that they'll explain a little later on. That increase is resulting in a $51,000 increase in the budget. Polkney High School has also recommended the addition of a consumer science teacher, this position that was in the budget in FY '21 and is not currently in the, not currently in the school, and they're looking to bring that one back. That would be a $71,000 increase. Proctor High School is looking to add back a, I have a counselor/behavior position. This was a position that they also had in, I believe it was FY '20, FY '20, and was cut, was not replaced, and they're looking to bring that position back. And there'll be more discussion on each of the positions, and the principals will give a little details on this. And that one, I have estimated a $70,000 increase. The next one is, there's a part-time office assistant, which is currently working. It was hired this year. It's not in this year's budget, and that's why it's on here. It's a change from budget to budget, but it is a current staff position. And then the last one is not a staffing change, it's a, it's a, an upgrade to the West Rutland heating system. It's a replacement of a JACE, which is a heating control. It has a cost of approximately $70,000, and we'll discuss the different options on that as far as how we want to fund that. Okay, so before we discuss those positions, I would like to talk a little bit about the tax rate calculation. You go to page 16 of your budget handout. I have three different scenarios laid out. Looking at scenario one, which is page 16, there's still a few pieces of the tax rate calculation that we don't have yet. We're still waiting from the state, and they're, they could have significant impacts to the calculation, so this is all just estimates at this point. So the first piece is calculating the expense budget, which we identified as being up by That is based on total expense for Quarry Valley. The next piece is education spending. This is the amount that we're going to have to raise in property taxes. It's total expense minus any local revenues. Local revenues are mainly for us, it's tuition revenue and surplus revenue, but then it's also smaller things, like interest income, student activities, income, rental income. Those are the smaller pieces. So education spending is up 2.4%. Equalized pupils. So this is the first number that we're waiting on from the state. It's typically due out December 15. We have not got a final number yet, but they did just send out an estimate the other day. And right now, it was, this was late last week after the budget had been sent out, and it's looking like our equalized pupils might decrease by approximately six pupils. But that is just an estimate at this time. So for the purposes of this scenario, I've kept the equalized pupils flat. Like I said, I put this together before that estimate had come out. So education spending per equalized pupil is currently up by 2.4%. The next part of the calculation is to figure out if we put the yield, the yield is the number that the legislators approve. We take our ed spending by equalized pupil divided by our yield to get our unified tax rate. If anybody has seen the Tax Commissioner's recommendation, he came out back December 1 and stated that there was a $90 million surplus in the ed fund, which was quite a surprise to many when last year we were talking about a statewide deficit in the ed fund. Based on his recommendations, he stated if we use the full surplus, we would have a property yield of $13,846. An increase in the yield brings down property taxes. The Finance Department at this Agency of Vermont said not to use that number as an actual number in the tax rate calculations. Based on his estimate, he suggested we use a property yield of $12,937, which is approximately half the difference between what our current yield is and the Tax Commissioner's recommendation. He believes that once the legislators start meeting, that they'll either decide not to use that full surplus or use that surplus for other means other than reducing taxes. So in scenario one, I'm using the Agency of Education's recommendation, not the Tax Commissioner's. So based on that, we're looking at a unified tax rate of $1.31. So typically, in the tax rate calculation, the next step would be to add the incentive, but so last year, this current year that we're in was the last year of our incentive. So we received four years' worth of incentives from merging. First year was eight cents, and then six, four, and two. So last year, this current, last year's budget cycle, which is the current year we're in, was a two cent reduction, and so this year, we would be at zero. So everybody's tax rate starts at $1.31, and then we apply the common level appraisal. Common level appraisal was due out December 15, and as of today, we still have not received the letters from the State of Vermont with those numbers. This is the piece that could really have a significant impact based on, so common level appraisal compares the fair market value of your home to the assessed value of your home. And if you've been following the real estate market over the last year or two, you've noticed that house prices are selling for a lot more than the assessed values, which could be a little worrisome when we look at this number. We could see significant drops in our common level appraisal. As the common level appraisal drops below 100, it means the fair market value of your home is higher than the assessed value, and it increases your tax rate. So looking at the CLAs that I have in right now, these are last year's. So Polkney's at 97.5, so they're two and a half percent below the level mark. Proctor's at 99.87, so their assessed value and their fair market value are pretty close to even. And then West Rutland's at 105, which means that their assessed value is higher than their fair market value at the time that these numbers came out. So based on using level numbers, we would be looking at a tax rate of $1.34 for Polkney, $1.31 for Proctor, and $1.24 for West Rutland. I mean, as you can see at the very bottom, there's a, these are, all decreases over last year of 9.2%, and that's mainly due to that increase in the yield. Any questions regarding the two scenarios? Okay, so just looking at scenario two, I've just kept everything confident except I played against some of those three state numbers that we know are still estimates at this time. In scenario two, I've kept equalized pupils the same, and I kept the delay the same, but I just used the property yield to the Tax Commissioner's recommendation. And by doing that, it changes the tax rate, changed to 15% without the number last year. So there could be a five percent swing in tax rate just based on the yield recommendations. And then in scenario three, I still kept equalized pupils the same. I went back to the original property yield, and I lowered all the CLAs by 10% or 10 points. And so by doing that, it eliminated that 9% decrease in all this tax rates and brought all the tax rates to anywhere between ranging from flat, with West Rutland's up by 23%, with Polkney being up by 1.2%. So I just wanted to show how these numbers could have a significant impact, and just so the budget that we're voting on is not the only piece that affects our tax rate calculation. And even if we are diligent on making sure that we're fiscally responsible and keeping our budget low, those state numbers can still have a swing in our tax rate that's out of our control, that can increase taxes even if our budget is down. So at this time, I guess I would take any questions on the changes in the tax rate calculation, and then from there, we can go into the discussion on the additions to the budget.
Any questions for Louis? Okay. So we're going to start with Jen, and we're going to talk about one of your positions. We're not going to talk about any positions that are current. We're not going to talk about any positions that involve any current employee. If you think that it might, please do not even raise the question. We will go into executive session to speak about those positions or any current position. So Jen will speak about the counselor behavior position.
Yep. So as Louis had said, this was a position that was in the budget, but it was more of a teen or schooler. I'm looking for more of a person that would be working directly with those students and teachers. I have a little thing, if I can present it, that kind of talks about what I have in the building and how this would be a little different. So let me just present my screen. Can you see, can you see that screen?
Yes.
Okay. So I have two people in the building that act as behavior supports. Sacramento Scarrow, Ms. Scarrow is our guidance counselor, and so she's less of a person that would be dealing with behaviors, but kind of plays into that overall system. And so she's mostly responsible for academic counseling, career and college counseling, anything to do with grades, PLP oversight, and she does do some short-term counseling with students. And then Ms. Ackerman, she is more for students that are on an IEP and doing long-term mental health counseling. She also is part of our sort of restorative practices and any comprehensive support plans that students might need to be on. And so we have a lot of mental health people in the building. What I'm sort of lacking is this person that deals with students that are not necessarily on a plan but might need help maintaining consistent behavior, regulation, that don't necessarily need specialized instruction but need sort of ongoing help with staying in the classrooms, and also then working with the teachers on strategies that they can use to keep kids in the classroom, monitor student behavior... in the classroom, monitor student behavior, sort of short-term interventions, and then kind of that longer-term if a crisis plan needs to be made, dealing with the wraparound supports in conjunction with the other counselors. So that's sort of what I'm looking for in the area of a behavioral position. And what we kind of call that, I'm not really, I'm not dead set on title, or that Proctor Elementary in previous years had had a behavioral interventionist working there with the students. And so that is a highly specialized position sometimes. You know, if we have someone that has a counseling degree, they do deal with behaviors a lot more, and so that could be, you know, how it was advertised as well. I do have some other data that I could share with the board, but given the numbers of our school, I feel more comfortable sharing that in an executive session, because it could identify individual students.
Okay. Questions for Jen?
I have just a question. Could this be a position that might be able to be shared with the elementary school if needed? I don't know if, Chris, do you have? It seems like we're only going to need more positions kind of like this in coming years, or at least more people who can flex into those kind of positions. So I was just wondering if you could envision this at some point maybe being shared?
Chris? I have somebody in that role that works for pre-K through grade 6. So at this time, I mean, I would always love more mental health support persons. I think that is a better need where we're at right now. However, I think in terms of like your support person, I have a full-time person that is basically needing to meet our students in that, in that sense. So I don't see it necessarily, Jen. Yeah, I mean, I think that it could be shared maybe, I don't know what West Rutland has at some point, like once things kind of get on a more even keel, it could be somewhat thing that maybe would go, a person that would go back and forth between West Rutland and Proctor. I could see that happening as a share. Right now, I do feel like the need is pretty high in my building. But I do think long-term, I mean, it could be something that could be more of two buildings that could be used once my teachers have that sort of development underneath their belt and are able to do more of the spot situational checking in classrooms.
Okay. Any other questions? Christie's was the ad of technology funds for Chromebooks, and we talked about this before, actually Greg was on before and we spoke about this. And unless there's significant uprising from the board, I'm willing to give her a pass on this. This is something that just simply wasn't added to when it was added to in other schools. So this is something I feel like she needs to speak to at this time. If other board members feel that way, I'm sure she's adequately prepared to speak to it, but... All right. Hearing none, we will move on. Jay, Jay was asking for $70,000 for the heating system controls, and we actually at the last meeting had spoke about the literacy and the books, and I felt like we came to a consensus that we are going to pilot this program at West Rutland and monitor it using ESER funds, and then look at the data the following year to see if this is something we are interested in adopting for all Quarry Valley elementary schools. I think at this time, Chris said, we have something like 27 liter-
We have a lot of different initiatives, literacy. So we're looking to better align our literacy.
So in order to do that, so that was a discussion at the last meeting. I have in my notes that we had come to a consensus to pilot it through ESER funds. Was there any different recollection from board members? Okay?
I think-
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, on top of what you said, I think I remember also just talking about cost analysis while it's being piloted, sort of looking at, you know, since we have a bunch of different things that are being used to see, you know, cost effectiveness as well as how well it works. You know, how well do teachers enjoy using it? How does it work on the kids, you know, the student side of it? But also, you know, there's a lot of consumables that are used every year versus maybe programs that don't have that, that kind of, you know, cost benefit analysis we talked about also doing, I think.
Right. I think it's going to be analysis of not just this program, but existing programs that we have. That's something the literacy coach has spoken to, so that when we are speaking, let's say, you know, even in July of this upcoming year, that weekend, while we won't have data and won't have piloted this program yet, we can start having some conversations about what these literacy programs look like across Quarry Valley. I think that, you know, that's certainly our, our goal is to have some level of consistency. So if, you know, a third grader in Proctor is using this program, the third grader in West Rutland should be using this program, because we know how transient our populations are. So that is a way in which we support our kids to the best of our ability. So, all right, so we will take the ESER off, and Jay will just speak to the heating systems control.
Yep, good evening, folks. Thank you. The JACE is what stands for the Java Application Control System. If you remember correctly, a year ago, we had a furnace failure, and we replaced the furnace. The furnace is the actual massive box the size of a Volkswagen in our basement that heats the building. But that sends heat to various rooms, and what controls that is called the JACE. It is a computer system that runs and sends information from the classroom back down to the furnace and vice versa. And it allows us to control the heat in each classroom. Each classroom has what's called a unit vent. It's a large box that is in there that brings in fresh air and also produces heat that comes out from the furnace. That whole control system is what is supported by what's called a tritium software. And that software system, as you know, computers, is about 15 or 16 years old. It is no longer supported by any vendor. So that software system, if you know about the computers that we have, if you have an outdated software system and other things get updated, those two systems don't work with each other. This was a system that was actually on its way out. We replaced a small JACE last year. We built it within our own budget, and that controlled just a very small portion of the building. But the vast majority of this system is controlled by this original JACE. So think about a computer system that talks to each classroom. It would have to be something that would have to go out to bid because of the extent of this cost. And the vendor that originally gave us the bid last year said that bid will no longer be honored. They would have to rebid it, and it would be probably an increase of, they don't know how much until they actually come in and redo the bid. We wanted to get an idea of how much this was actually going to cost. So it'd be a great example today, when it was seven degrees outside, we were trying to get onto the computer system to regulate the heat in certain classrooms. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't work. So we have had classrooms that are very warm, classrooms that are very cold. It's hard to regulate. And when we try to find out if the furnace system is working overnight to make sure that it's, when Carl wakes up at 4:00 a.m. and pops on the computer system, he is able to sometimes check to see the temperature and sometimes not able to see what the temperature is inside different parts of the classroom. So West Rutland had had a, this was something that prior to even the furnace catastrophe, which is running great, so thank you, this was something that we were considering needing to replace, and we're to the point now where we're going to have to do something sooner than later. Because if this system fails, we have no actual control over the heat in the classrooms. So that's why we wanted to increase it to one year, a one-year expenditure. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
So is the $70,000 the bid from last year, or $70,000 is just your number you-
No, it's the bid from last year.
Okay. And once this is updated, then this is something Carl could oversee from his phone then?
Yes, we have that capability now, but the software we can't do is, we all have computers. When they ask you to update your computer, there's nothing update on the system. It's literally having a slow death. I don't know any other way of putting it. So we try to work with our vendor to make sure that it is up to date as possible, but their software is just not supported. I see that Kristen has a question as well.
Yep.
So do you, so this is an old bid. I mean, everything's prices are going up, so probably it'll come in a little bit higher than that, I'm going to guess, and then-
That's what we have been told.
Okay. And then you said it's a one-time purchase. Do you know, did they give you any information about how often upgrades occur, or like when the window closes on the software, like in 10 years, five years, like just to anticipate sort of another larger software purchase?
Yeah, so already it's not supported. The company has said, we, there's nobody to support this software. So what we're tweaking is manually tweaking each unit vent when we need to, trying to figure out the best that we can. I know that Carl is on the computer with one of the office assistants almost daily in the cold weather, trying to make sure that it's actually working right. As far as its longevity, I'm assuming that, and again, I'm not an HVAC expert, I'm not a computer expert. If we got 15, 16 years out of this, the one that we currently have, I'm assuming that we will get something close to that out of this one. And then the nice thing is that the new JACE will be able to talk to the other JACE that we put in last year using local funds, and it will give us much better control over the heat of that building now that we've got a furnace that is producing heat.
All right. And this is certainly something, and we can talk about it a bit, but this is certainly something that would fall under the capital maintenance sinking fund that we put money in, and, you know, we'll talk about putting money in for this upcoming year. And this is certainly a project that clearly falls within that, looking at larger projects like that to pay for those expenditures. So just something to think about as we move on. Did you guys have any questions? Nope? All right, we will move on to Joe. Did Joe leave?
No, he was there.
Oh. Good evening.
So I guess I'll start with a family consumer science position. That was a position that the teacher left last year, and we did not fill the position this year. We were hoping to redo.
Joe, your audio is fading in and out like it was doing the other day.
Let me log off and try to log in.
Well, that's good, right there. Maybe you just have to lean into us.
All right, thanks. Our family consumer science position, it's, what we've done in the past with that position is we have taken, like, use that, that person was certified in science, so we've used that for like a food science program. Kids can get a science credit with their cooking, you know, so it's not, especially for those students that like chemistry is not going to be something that they're looking, you know, they're not college-bound and, you know, trying to do the chemistry class. They're actually, you know, practical and hands-on, you know, just the, we use it for our middle school experience groups with the cooking and the sewing. We have done sewing classes with, you know, and then obviously cooking classes at the high school level as well. You know, this is something hopefully, you know, in the near future with the Quarry Valley philosophy is, you know, it's something that, you know, maybe they're at Pulteney for the fall semester, and they go to the West Rutland or Proctor for the spring semester or something like that, you know, or do some, this would be a great, I know you can't do a lot of the cooking, and it's more of a hands-on thing, but, you know, we can try to be proactive and try to find different things for this program to do. And like I said, hopefully, if we get somebody that has a science background or even a math background or something like that, you know, dual certification program, we can, you know, look at some different options for some of our students here for, to get them different credits.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have a question. Joe, would this be the kind of position that could also fulfill sort of like a maker's space? I already mentioned sewing and cooking, but like, are there some other things that could fall under that?
Depending on who the person we get, yes. The last person we had in there had a math and science background or math and science license as well, so they could do those different classes. Again, depending on the, we could do a maker's space type thing, like a STEM, a STEM program here as well. Again, it all depends on who we get. You know, there's not a lot of family consumer science people out there right now. And I know even when Desmond was here last year, was trying to get certified, it was, the state kept changing the rules there. You know, they tell her one thing, and as she's starting to work on her certification, they kind of changed the rules midstream on her. But that's, you know, hopefully it's, you know, we've looked at in the past, like I said, the last three that have been here since I've been in the building as an administrator, some of the classes they take or they propose and they give to the kids are kind of, you know, there's some neat classes, and we can kind of think outside the box. I know with our middle school too, they also helped, part of the help program as well. You know, when you lost a kid years ago, they kind of helped out in that situation with a middle school kid.
Okay. Any other questions?
And Joe? Oh, sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So I was just going to ask a quick question, and, you know, when you talk about positions potentially in the future being shared across buildings, I wonder a little bit if that's something that does need to be sort of, what's the point at which, you know, we have to actually figure out whether that's going to be the case or not? You know, is it sort of you hire someone and then we see, depending on the background of the person that you hired, whether, you know, one of the other schools has a, you know, has a need for that? Or do we need to do a little more coordination at this stage potentially so that we get someone who could, you know, fill in the potential needs across multiple schools?
I can't answer part of that, Sarah, but part of the, I can answer is, I just know that West Rutland, in fact, at this time, do not have, and they obviously do, but they don't have a family consumer science program. So, you know, if you get the, you look at over the years, you know, we've lost our industrial arts program and family consumer science, you know, the, you know, I just, I think it's a smart, you know, philosophically for the skills for these students to learn just to, you know, the cooking is, you know, Mrs. Harmon who was here for 40 some odd years when I was in seventh grade, taught me how to sew buttons, and I can still sew buttons thanks to Mrs. Harmon. So I still remember that, you know, 40 some odd years later. So it just, you know, those type of skills of, you know, trying to survive with, you know, how to cook ramen noodles, and so you can survive on ramen noodles in your early twenties or something like that, you know, that type of thing, so. I think that's just the part of it, just the cooking, you know, and just trying to get those kids that might not step foot in the kitchen. And again, the math and science piece of it, just with, you know, when they were doing the food science program, even just the measuring, where kids don't like to do fractions, but you know, 2/3 of a cup of flour, and, you know, they've even done them in the past where they kind of had the kids make the wrong recipe. So if it asks for teaspoon of salt, they made them use a tablespoon, and then see what the difference is, and how come it came out that way, and why does it taste different, that type of thing. So that practical piece of it, I think, some of these students- So, that practical piece of it, I think, some of these students have. If they're sitting in a math class and say they keep doing tests, but they're in a cooking class, they can figure it out or even sewing class through a measurement.
Kristen Ross?
I was gonna say that several years ago too, we had talked about, you know, having more financial literacy in that position, also if the person was the right fit for that. Because, you know, going into, if they are college-bound or community college-bound, just understanding what is student debt? What is debt? You know, like, you don't get that anywhere. So, having that as part of consumer science, I think, would be really helpful too.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? All right. Kristen?
Hi, everybody. So, Joe and I met today with Rich. And Joe, I think you... No, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus or anything. We were talking about how when we lost our maintenance person a few years back... Am I echoing? Sorry, I don't know. Is it okay?
Yeah. Yep.
Two mic from you.
So, anyway, when we lost our maintenance position a few years back, in my mind, our building doesn't look as good as it used to. We have people scrambling around and people from the high school... We have to take people from the high school to come down and help us finish what needs to be done at night because we only have someone from like 10:30 to 6:00. And Rich is there in the morning to help, but when Rich, you know, his job encompasses a lot of other things than maintenance. You know, he has to meet with vendors. He has to do budgeting. And he's called away, like, for example, this morning, there was an issue with the furnace at the high school, so Rich was late coming down. So, I don't mind pitching in, don't get me wrong, but, you know, we were setting up the chairs for Tess to stay. You know, we're the ones that will have to go and get paper towels, whatever. It's just we're... When there's no one there, there's no one there except for him and me.
Yes.
Aren't principals doing that now in other buildings? Setting up chairs for Tess to stay? I mean, I don't mean to be harsh, but that's something if I've missed in principal reports, that's a pitch-in for everybody. That's not a custodial responsibility.
I think something else that we talked about is we're up almost, I don't know. We have like 240 students at the elementary school and I don't know what you have at the high school, Joe. And when you have more kids, it does take a lot more cleanup time, believe it or not.
Again, the disinfectant completed in the last two years, but our schools are not as clean as they used to be. And it's nothing against our guys not working. It's just they don't have the time. It's you gotta prioritize the time. When we took over the elementary school, the town used to... There's 11 acres down there and we contracted out approximately about one acre was mowed by Marty and the other 10 acres, the town did. They took care of the mowing. They took care of dealing with the ball fields. Joe was there for the garbage, little things like that. The bathroom.
Can't hear you.
Taking the bathrooms. What we could remember, we had quarry values with fields and colonies. It's just little things of, you know, Rich estimates a thing. Each week in the summertime, just when he has to weed whack.
So, you don't... You don't have someone come in and mow your properties?
We have someone that's...
I can't... We cannot hear you.
Joe, you're fading out again.
I could answer that question.
Recorder.
Yes, so Colton School's do contract out for their mowing of the schools. Like Joe said, the fields were once maintained by the town, the 11 acres. And when the merger happened, the town stopped maintaining those and it is school property.
Right.
So, those 11 acres have been maintained by the maintenance staff since the merger. That piece has not been contracted out. They did go out to, well, not unofficially, but they have posed or I think three or four different companies. And the cost just for that mowing of those fields and making of the, just the grass, not the actual feet, the baseball field, was approximately, I think, $12,000.
Okay. Okay. Any questions about that position? All right. There are a few things we can talk about in open session. I think we could start with Jay's request for the Jace controls. That's something that we could fund from the capital maintenance fund. Conversation about that.
So, just I'll just state this so that it's clear. So, the $70,000 right now is included in the budget. So, if we were to fund that out of capital maintenance fund, that would be a reduction of $70,000 in the budget.
Yes.
I think it sounds like something exactly like something we thought that money would go towards, so it seems to make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm curious. Do we have any other ideas or topics of capital projects that we'd like to use some of that money for already? Is there an existing list somewhere?
We don't have one. After we get through this, that's something that we've spoken, we've spoken in the executive committee with Chris about is having, you know, kind of building principals and facility managers put together kind of a two-year, a three-year and like that. That's the essence for creating this capital maintenance fund. And that's, we can talk about kind of following this about putting in for this year. That's why it's important to, you know, obviously put funds in there when we have funds available. But as Kristen Wetman said, that's certainly what this fund was created for. So, if we could fund it from there and take that out of the budget, that gives us some option for some different, for some other items. So, is there a motion then to fund that from the capital maintenance fund?
I'd like to motion.
Motion by Mike. Second?
Seth will second.
Second by Seth to fund the... We're just gonna say the Jace controls because we don't know a dollar amount from the capital maintenance fund. Okay? Is everyone okay with that as the motion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Before we go, we'll add the next thing. Just like the states, I'm sure some board members are wondering about the facilities review that we outsourced out. So, we do have a report. We got a report back from the company probably a couple of months ago. It was reviewed by Chris and I. We had a meeting with them and we went back and they had to make some significant changes to it based on our feedback. We did get a revised report, probably now about a month ago or so. It has not been shared yet because we feel that the report, and it's going to be shared at a future meeting. But we did feel the proper time to share it and really value up the budget discussion because the report has a lot of things that are not necessarily structurally needed at this time. There's not a good separation between items that are needed to maintain our buildings efficiently and effectively and those things that are just needed to make our buildings look nice and new and great. For example, there may be items on there, say, to replace like lockers and furnishings with really high numbers, well, I'm talking in the millions of dollars, which aren't things that necessarily need to be done, but could be done to make our schools look brand new in essence. So, I think it's a discussion that needs to be had and we can review that. But it'll be at a future meeting, but it didn't really pertain to the budget discussion. We feel that the items that are important and important that need to happen now have been identified and are included in our repair budgets or included in such as the Jace repair.
Okay. Thank you.
Hope that answers everybody's questions.
All right. Another piece we can discuss and make a decision on is the surplus and what we'd like to set aside in the funds. So, at the last meeting, Louis, you said it was $1,316,887.49. And of that, we could put $650 in for capital maintenance, $250 for athletics, and the remainder of $416,887.49 would be used for FY '23 revenue. Kristen Ross?
I just have a question about the athletics piece there, the set aside for athletics.
It's actually athletics, co-curricular, clubs. It says athletics here. I do not have the article in front of me, but the article was certainly more inclusive other than just athletics. So, it was like to be used for band uniforms or things like that. So, it said, I know it says co-curricular or something like that, but I don't have a... The one... Okay.
Yeah.
Chris is gonna try to find the warning.
That's okay. I just, I was wondering, does that, would that include maintaining athletic fields? So, lining and making sure the goal, you know, goal post maintenance or, you know, whatever is needed.
Well, each in the budget, we budgeted a new line last year for that. So, I would say no.
I think to answer your question, it wouldn't be for just annual routine maintenance.
Yeah.
But if there was a repair that needed, that was, for example, I mean, like, if this was in place at the time of the Terry Noah Field discussions, we were looking at replacing that whole field. Something like that would be something we can pull from this account. But like just routine maintenance, we wouldn't be pulling a little bit here and a little bit there. It would be maybe a repair.
And it should be more for one-time kind of expenditures. And I realize like, let's say, band uniforms aren't one-time expenditures, but once you buy a band uniform, probably not buying it for another, I don't know, five years, something like that. So, it's more for kind of extras that we're not building. Did you have the warning?
Yeah, I have here. I can read it. So, the article from last year's warning, excuse me, stated, "Shall the voters authorize a Quarry Valley Athletic slash Extracurricular Reserve Fund?" Oh, Jesus, excuse me.
Okay, so that's good. So, Extracurricular Reserve Fund. So, that allows, and we tried to make it as broad as possible, just like when we say capital maintenance. So, that can be anything from windows to furnace controls or whatever. So, there's a level, you know, of broad there, so. All right. So, what are our feelings about putting money in?
So, you're asking for like the percentages if they differ from what Louis has there? Is that the question?
Right. So, thinking about, you know, Jay Cummings was $70,000. Thinking about, you know, we're going to be looking at this report on our buildings, knowing our buildings are older, that if we have these funds at this time, it seems fiscally responsible, I think, to put money into the capital maintenance fund so that if something does come down the road or a furnace goes someplace else or something, we have those funds to at least assist and we're not talking about bonding for things that we have put money aside for a rainy day.
And the language of last year did say funding unanticipated or unbudgeted expenses.
Yeah. So, is ever... Yep.
So, the amounts I put in were the max and under, I mean, almost the max. If they were just a round number, I would actually go up to 263 for athletics and 658 for capital maintenance. But so the question is, do we want to do these full amounts or something less? That's the question.
So, I mean, the question is 50% and 20%. I mean, with the numbers...
If we do, if we do 40% and 15% instead, then that gives us more for some of the acquisitions that will affect students, you know, next year directly, right?
What does that mean?
In other words, hiring of human beings would start next year, right? Like, they would start next year, assuming we can get them in. Then, so instead of having 50 and 20, if we did 40 and 15, we would have certain amount of the circles we could use to actually offset those costs of some of the staff positions that are being asked for, right?
Well, there's 416 that's left for FY '23 revenue.
I'm gonna trigger the use for staffing.
The negative is the putting more in as revenue. So, we increase the amount we're putting in. It keeps it with our revenue number. So, right now, we have 420,000 in as a revenue number. If we were to increase that by putting in like 40 and 15, we're now increasing our revenue number so high that if we don't come this year with a surplus that matches that, then when we look at the FY '24 budget, we're going to be starting that much further down the stretch. So, let's say we do 500,000 and this year we're gonna do 250,000 off the plus. We're gonna start with 250,000 less than that next year.
Well, it's to offset the tax rate.
Those same decisions or other decisions, just if you're not budgeting.
Anyone interested in making a motion with the percentages for the capital and the athletic co-extracurricular?
I'm open to the 50 and the 20. I don't know if there's more discussion wanting to be had by some of the others. And I don't know that we have very many opportunities to capitalize on putting some of these funds likely.
Yeah, I mean, there may, there certainly are going to be years, I'm sure forthcoming, where we're not going to have funds to put in. I mean, these have been kind of anomaly years. So, did you want to make a motion, Seth, for 50 and 20?
Kind of see if people want to add a little bit more of that, but maybe if I can find that out.
All right. I just, I'm not here to get any more discussion, so.
Yeah. I would be happy to make a motion for 50 and 20. Let's see what happens.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike.
Just to clarify before we vote.
Yeah.
The numbers that are in here are not 50 and 20. They're like, they're almost 50 and 20. It's something 50 and 250.
Right, so worse...
50 and 20 would raise these numbers a little bit by about $21,000.
Louis, can I ask a question? Do you want a specific number or do you want a percentage?
I mean, I think it's cleaner if you just voted on a specific number.
Seth, would you make an amendment to that?
What is it?
We did 20% last year. We did percentage.
Yeah, last year we did percentages, we didn't do a number.
The ballot is up to 50%.
Yeah.
Which gives us a number that we can go up to.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference to me, so.
You could do whatever the board prefers. What's in here right now is 650,000.
No, no, I understand that, I read that, yeah. That's why I read it that way. So do you want it to be 650 and 250 Seth, rather than 50 and 20? I can't hear you because you muted.
I must, I missed the button. Yeah, I will revise, so we'll go with 650,000 capital fund and 250,000 to be extra slash co-curricular slash athletic.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Mike, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, all right. What else are we going to do in open session? I think that with respect to the budget, the next conversations are going to need to move to executive session and everyone has a different link for executive session and what we'd ask our principals to stay on this link and if we have questions or the need for a principal, Chris will message you and invite you into executive session, okay? And Louis, you'll come with us. And just before you go, we are, I'll just, I mean, we'll obviously come out of executive session, but just while we're all right here, we're changing the January date, that's Martin Luther King, and so we're moving that to Thursday, January 6th. All right.
Lisa, can I make a recommendation since, can we show the principal reports for that meeting?
Sure.
Okay, just because we won't have anything to really report on, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Also, I think I'm missing the link to the executive session, can we put it in the chat or maybe?
No, I'll, I'll put it in the chat, I'll send it to you email, okay Kristen?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go into executive session, we're going to say at 7, let's say 7:25 because we're going to give him an opportunity to pick up, all right? And Chris will, if you don't have the link, put it in there and if principals stay on this link and then if we need you, Chris will invite you in. So a motion to go into executive session at 7:25?
Question?
Yeah.
Do we want him to be here for after the time we come out of executive session to continue to record or?
We're going to be in executive session, I think, longer than he's going to want to stay, is going to be my guess. All right, motion to go into executive session at 7:25.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Seconded by Seth, all those in favor? All right, so we will enter at 7:25, thank you. And we're going in for personnel.